All right, we're gonna open the Monday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty Board of Selectmen meeting at four thirty. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation's underdog individual liberty and justice.
All right, welcome Catherine to our meetings. Is there anybody on Zoom that we know of? Just, okay. We are going to do the warrant first, and Jason can't wait to do it.
I make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty-one dash zero seven in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananimos.
Make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty-one dash zero seven in the amount of five hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents, which breaks down to the town of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
Water sewer.
Water sewer, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. Payroll withholding, five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Light bills, eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Grants and revolving, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents. And chapter ninety for one hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananimos. All right, moving on to approve the minutes, we've got quite a few minutes to approve. I don't know if everyone had a chance to skim through those. Anybody wanna start with making a motion on the April thirteenth?
I make a motion for the minutes for April thirteenth for approval.
Second.
Discussion on that? All those in favor?
I abstain.
Next up, minutes from May fourth.
I make a motion for approval of the May fourth amendment, minutes with a friendly amendment that I believe we opened the meeting with Acting Chair Swetlana Watson. Would that be right? Because the other one said that.
It really...
Doesn't matter that much, but I thought we should.
I don't know whether we have to send them back.
Oh, okay.
I don't...
Otherwise, it's fine.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, anybody care about the title that was on there? That's the only error that was seen, okay. All those in favor?
All abstain.
Minutes from May eleventh.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes from Monday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Jason abstains. Did you show up on the eighth, is that when you...
No.
No.
No, after the fifteenth.
Doesn't show up for a while.
All right, June eighth.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes of Monday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Jason abstains.
Good day.
Now you're on, all right, June twenty-ninth.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes from Monday, May, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Good, Jason, you were here at this one.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Sixth.
I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes for Monday, July sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananimos, July twentieth.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes for Monday, July twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananimos, twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion for approval of the meeting minutes for Monday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, moving on to appointments, we've got the appointment of Liz Zimmerman, nineteen Pandora Drive, to the Groveland Day Committee through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Liz Zimmerman, Groveland Day Committee through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, thank you, Liz. Appointment of Sarah McGrath, One Rivers Edge, to the Finance Board through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Make a motion, will you approve, uh, Ms. McGrath to the Finance Committee through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? And finally, appointment of Catherine Willett, fifty-four King Street, to Recreation Committee through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Make a motion for appointment of Catherine Warden to the Groveland Recreation Committee.
Willett, that's Catherine Warden.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Catherine Willett.
Unless you wanna be on the Recreation Committee.
No, there's too many Cathys in the room already. I'm a Cathy too, okay, so Catherine Willett, I apologize, um, to the Groveland Recreation Committee. And where's the date on this?
June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
My only reservation is that I think for the most part, Recreation Committee is stacked with girls softball. Folks would like to see them. Try to get a more diverse crowd. But right now, we don't have much of an option because there's only three of us on the committee, so we couldn't even have a meeting last week, so we're desperately in need of a fourth just to have a quorum.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Catherine, thank you, Sarah. All right, moving on, we have discussion and possible vote, COVID discussion. Claire and Deborah. What do we got going on?
Still looking pretty good.
Yeah?
The last one being, um, everybody dressed, you know, so personally tired. Probably around, maybe the beginning of the year, possibly the end of last year. So this was just, you know, with routine blood work that it was done and it came back positive. So, but she's fine. No quarantine. So no one's on quarantine right now.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything definite yet. Have you, Deb?
About the school.
I'm a school, I'm a Bagnall.
Well, the, the, all the, the, the school districts in the state had to submit their plans this Friday. Imagine right now they're being studied by the state and by the Department of Education and hopefully by the Board of Health to make sure they're all going to be adequate to meet the students' needs. But it, it, it does raise a question because the state has allowed each district to develop their own kind of, and I, I see that as a bit problematic because I know of one case where we have a woman that lives here in Groveland, but teaches in Lynn. We know Lynn is a high, uh, it's a hotspot right now.
Highest spots right now.
She also has students in Penn Tucket. So I, I don't know if that has been really vetted with the state and how they plan on, on working that out. There's no one, um, the state doesn't have one comprehensive strategy. They've left it up to each school dri- district. So what I, problematic is these teachers that cross school districts, teach in one school dri- district but live in another, that could possibly cross-contaminate school districts as they go back and forth. So I'm not sure how they plan on addressing that, but I guess they've just had the plan since Friday, so I hope they do. Because I think that, that'd be a concern of mine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why they don't just mandate one format.
Well, I, I...
It seems like it'd be like, this is what you're gonna do, instead of having fifty-two different types.
I think the real reason is you look at places like Everett and Lynn and Rivair where the numbers are, positivity rate is over five percent. And then you look at places like Groveland, West Newbury, where the positivity rate is under one percent. So I, I think that's where the state kinda got tied up. If we mandate one strategy, how does that work for a hotspot like Lynn versus a cold spot like Groveland? How do we manage that? Do we, are we, uh, is it overkill in Groveland because it's what we need to do in Lynn? You know what I mean? And I think that's what led to the development of each district's kind of on their own. I'm not sure that's the wisest plan, but right now that's all we have.
Some of the dilemma that they have, that the different schools are, that, you know, like the Bagnalls are relatively new building for schools. And, um, you know, it's pretty well set up to do something like this. And when we went through it, uh, we saw the nurses' office and where the, um, you know, the children who are going home with possible symptoms are, are gonna be, okay, which is right off the nurses' office. Older schools, like, you know, the cities, they're not gonna have this type of setup. So, you know, they're gonna have to work out...
Let's think of the page in West Newbury, that's not a very new building.
Part of it's really...
It's, it's extremely, it might be one of the oldest buildings in the district. If not the oldest building in the district, maybe next to Washington Hall. I can't imagine that HVAC system is...
And the Bagnall has a bathroom off of each classroom, which is, I thought was pretty amazing.
Any questions? Jason? Catherine?
Well, are we just school or just discussion in general?
Anything about COVID?
Okay, so, um, first of all, I, I know what's in the school packet, I don't know how many of you have had the chance to review it, but I redid the one from my school, Body of Attack, and I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with the amount of work that goes into these plans. They, they have protocols for if a teacher doesn't feel well, what happens, who goes to work? What happens if you have a student in your room? Who do you contact, where do they go? That's all laid out. We had to submit three plans, all-in, hybrid, all-out. And as of the last school committee meeting, they changed it from all-in to hybrid. So it's, every school had to submit that this way so that we could go where we need to go. And I, I think they're hopefully taking care of everything. But in going through the school thing, it opened my eyes up a little more to perhaps what we should be doing here in our own town for all of our town employees and in these town buildings. And I did get a list of the money that we've spent or committed, I think some of it says kind of pending maybe, on COVID-related CARES Act, on things, and I believe we had an allocation of, I don't know, six hundred and seventy thousand or something. We spent about seventy-five or committed seventy-five so far in various departments. But it struck me that, um, we've done some things in one building and not in another, and, and it occurred to me that we need to maybe create a task group, a small one, from within our town employee pool. And if one member of the board needs to help on it, that would be great, I think. But I think they need to come together. I was gonna ask for the board's support tonight in sending out, um, a checklist that is for office space, but there's a lot of checklists, so I'm not sure how much of this you wanna send out to them. But it tells each department head what specifically they need to be ready to do as the buildings open. And I feel like they need to know that first, you know, what they're supposed to be doing for their, and then what they're supposed to be doing when people come in for an appointment or whatever we end up moving to. And I feel that, um, getting some input from our town employees on this will help us make sure that this spending... I made extra copies, I don't know if, did you, did you all get this that I requested? No, if I press it down. And I'm not asking that you make a decision on this moment if you don't want to. This is, thanks. Save me getting up out of the chair. And this is one for, um, one minute, thanks, thank you. So it's, when you go online, there's a lot of stuff, but then there's the checklist that tell you, tell each department, each building, what they should be doing in that building. And there's a lot, you know, as far as if there's windows or there's not windows. And I feel like different departments have asked for different things, and I, I feel that we should try to have a consistent level of wellness and safety across all our town buildings. And I don't feel that the Board of Selectmen can do this in our vacuum during our meeting because the people that are in the departments and in the different buildings know more about what's in each building and what the checklist would tell them. I'm not asking them to come up with a wish list for everything they ever wanted, but look at this checklist and, and these requirements for bringing your employees back and make sure that we're set up for it.
How long is the checklist?
It's like a lot of pages. And there's just so much stuff, I will give this to you, you, because there's just...
Thanks.
I, it's not easy, and that's why I thought, you know, first give them the checklist and then ask them to get together and look at the list of what's been spent, because maybe you'll see another department got something that you might want, you know? And I want all of our employees to feel like they can return to work, work as safely and well as possible. And also want people who need to make an appointment to see somebody in a town building to feel that we're doing everything we can to protect their wellness and safety. And maybe the Board of Health should participate, not to put more, I hate to burden you guys with more, but it would be helpful because you know the most about a virus, and this is just my input. So my question tonight to my board members is, would you want to have the departments get together and start to look? Or do you want to look this over and vote at our next meeting?
I think we could submit this and review it as a board at the next meeting. At least that way they, everyone can take a look at what this checklist looks like, because it is ten pages or something. But at first glance, there's a lot of this stuff is already being done with...
Yes.
Spacing and directions and what rooms are off limits because you don't need to, and cleaning, which is done by the sanitary crew.
We're cleaning most buildings, but not all.
Pines this week?
Yes. Oh, that's...
Some, I think we were, the, the custodian was on vacation this week?
I think it's next week or the week after, I thought it was the twenty-seventh, but...
I thought it was the seventeenth.
I thought it was the seventeenth.
Okay, there's a list of vendors on that website for cleaning, and not in that list, but when you go into the state website, there's a list of vendors that do cleaning. I can try and find it again and send you the link.
Yeah, I think, um...
So, because they've done a lot of the workforce, it's just a matter, they have so many links.
Yeah, I just don't know that we're gonna get anybody tomorrow.
I, actually...
I think you can.
There's a woman that lives in town that owns a cleaning service that I've spoken to already. And she said that she would be willing to do it. And I said, I, I told her it would be for a week. And I'll have to, I'll have to question her again because the car she gave me was, was crazy. I, I thought she said she'd do it for like forty dollars.
For the week?
A week.
But the biggest concern, I'll be honest, it's for my mind, isn't the bathrooms at the recreation area, it's the town buildings.
Um...
Because we're not cleaning them this whole week, he's on vacation, and people are in here working, so...
I thought, I thought individual people were taking that upon them, well, I don't know. I, all I know is that we were, somebody was supposed to do something down at the Pines.
I feel like we should...
And I think it was me and, or Jason and I that were going to do, take a day or round robin days.
Whatever it takes. The, but what I did find, do you, you don't remember the name of the person that you, you contacted?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, uh...
Mary?
No, Amy.
Amy, okay, because I, I know I found somebody too, and I, I tried contacting them, but I never got a return.
Well, her son plays baseball with my son, so, and I know she owned a, a, she owns a, a cleaning service.
But there's a...
Because as a, as disinfecter.
Just burp.
So we were talking at the baseball game, she'd be willing to do it.
Is she insured? Well, again, you know, when you're bringing someone into work for the town, we have to make sure these things. There is a list of cleaning service providers on the tab.
Can we figure out if that is this week, which I think it is this week?
Sure, it's this week.
If you can confirm that, and I think if, you know, if something needs to be done tomorrow, then I can... Well, I think it's probably too late to schedule someone unless we get someone ad hoc. But if, um, it needs to be done this week because he's on vacation, then I'll take tomorrow, I guess, I'll get the key. Uh, actually, the police department opens it, I believe.
Yeah.
But I guess I'd have to come in here and get the cleaning supplies?
Uh, they might be in, you know, the middle...
Yeah.
It might be in there. And that's where you're gonna find the electrical outlet, because the woman and I walked around the building looking for an electrical outlet so she could use the sanitizer disinfectant. And that's when I realized it's inside that, that middle room.
So we have to make sure that that's unlocked.
I haven't been down to Pines today, which is unusual, but Jason, have you been down there? Are the bathrooms open today?
I assume they're open, I haven't been down there.
You haven't been down there either?
I thought they had to be cleaned today.
Neither one of us has been down there? You better go down there fast, something's about to happen.
I also think during COVID, we should have, see if we can get a service provider in for whenever our maintenance guy is not in. And also for the buildings we're...
Yeah, he's due back on Wednesday, I just talked to Lori about him. He's coming back on Wednesday.
It's Wednesday?
Yeah.
How many people wipe up after themselves is not...
This can't be the week.
Not the checklist, that's all.
We were talking, we were talking about a week he'd be gone.
Well, I'm sorry, what did you...
Maybe it was last week, but all I know is I just talked to Lori about something, he said he, she said he's due back this Wednesday.
So maybe it's just today, which didn't happen in tomorrow?
I'm just saying.
It's still open, it's not a...
You're gonna go down after?
It's just, it's the sanitizing, it's not, it's not like it's a deep cleaning or anything.
Yeah, if we can confirm that, you can let me know tomorrow morning, and then I'll fi- figure out a way to get over there at some point and do it. Anything else, Catherine? Well, I'll make sure that Catherine gets this information into the packet for next week, and then we can discuss the whole thing.
I think, yeah, it's mainly that, that we, that we need to get our employees involved to find out what's going on, because we're obviously doing different things in different buildings. One building, we put in automatic toilet flushers, when the other buildings, we're telling everyone to wipe a toilet. I think, you know, we need to be a little consistent here, and the wellness of the employees is, is important, very important right now.
Better than now? Jason?
The only thing is, is Denise told me that the bathrooms at the Pines were closed on Saturday and Sunday just because they didn't have anybody to clean them. So if Amy's willing to do Saturdays and Sundays for the, just to sanitize them, it should be something we should consider doing. Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah.
Deb, anything?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any.
Yeah, just one quick thing, the numbers in Groveland are, are good. The numbers overall in the state, I understand, are now climbing?
Well, they have been for a month at least, yeah, yeah.
So it's probably...
No.
Our time, let our guard down.
I wouldn't say so, I, I think that, um, you know, once the, the children get back to school, you know, and we see how that works out, you know, hopefully there won't be any glitches and, you know, everything will go fine. But I think, you know, there's a lot of question marks with people, wondering if, you know, there's gonna be a problem, if we're gonna have a, a real spike.
We'll find out in a couple of months.
And now I understand, is that true?
No, no, no.
Sure.
The carriers, in many cases, they're carriers, asymptomatic carriers.
There are a number of people out there right now saying that children are immune.
No, they do get it.
Really?
They might not get it as bad, and I mean, if they have underlying, um, you know, diseases or underlying factors, sometimes they get it worse, but they do get it.
There was a child that died, um, somewhere in the country.
There've been a few, I believe.
Yeah.
Now, can you speak to the, um, long-lasting effects? And I wanna bring up, uh, Eduardo Rodriguez of the Boston Red Sox was tested positive for COVID, but now he's dealing with a heart issue related to the COVID?
He has an infection in his heart.
Is that common, do you know?
You know, I mean, is it common, is the condition common?
As a result of the COVID?
I, that I don't know.
Side effect?
I can't, I can't tell you that, um, you know, I don't think, I mean, it's the first case I've heard of. I mean, he might have had a predisposition to some sort of, uh, you know, thing going on with his heart. I mean, I don't know if he has a congenital heart defect or, you know, there might be something else that they're not publicizing. It's hard to know.
Yeah, I just thought I'd ask.
It's really, really hard to know, but...
There's a fine to that.
Myocarditis isn't a problem, it's not a common problem, even in normal conditions.
Yeah. All right, so as far as yard sales go, we don't have any new requests, so that is not something we have to worry about.
But if the... But if we do get a request, um, we had talked about it at our board meeting last week, and we're okay with them having yard sales if anybody wants to have one.
You guys are okay with it now?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Any kind of guidelines to that?
Just the same guidelines you would use, you know, I mean, hopefully they have hand sanitizer out there for them to wash their hands and...
I was told a long time ago by a very wise man that hope is not a, not a good practice.
I know, I know, but I mean, so if you ask somebody, ask for a yard sale, then they say they have to go by the, the CDC guidelines for anything, that's all. Right, I mean...
That's a good point, Mike, because, you know, the cloth bags that they were using at Market Basket?
Yeah.
They stopped using them right away.
Right, because they were used.
To the material.
Right. They went through disposable trash bags, so... We'll see what happens in the next...
But now you're allowed to bring your bags back in again.
Oh, you can?
You can?
Yeah, you can use your bags again.
I know the brown, the brown bags are back.
Yeah, the brown bags are back. Well, we'll see what happens in the next couple of weeks if we get any requests and just take it from there. Uh, we also got department head office hours, which, um, I would take as a minimum for office hours to when people can expect to get in touch with, um, department heads, so those are available. Uh, next up, we have Kelly Herbert, the candidate for interim Finance Director, do you wanna get her? Do you know where she is?
Where was that?
So, you guys done, yeah, thank you.
So, will there be any discussion on, on the hours of the...
I've got some more stuff to say.
I didn't wanna jump ahead of you, but...
Crash it.
I'm just gonna wipe them.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Oh...
COVID discussion. I'd be glad when we don't have COVID discussion on the...
Long time. COVID on the agenda, you know? You, Catherine, you're already a pro.
Yeah.
You got everything down.
This is the new interview, can you wipe down a table very quickly? Help me, how many seconds?
Kelly, welcome back.
Hi, Jen.
Virtual. How do you do?
You do the fist tump. Fist tump.
Hello, nice to meet you. Never better.
Hello. So Jason and I were on the exploratory committee to find a replacement for Denise. We interviewed Kelly, and we found her resume and her demeanor to be exactly what we're looking for. So we wanted to put her before the board and have them have a chance to ask some questions from her. You guys should have a copy of her resume, I'm going through this packet. But I don't know, Jason and I... Um, but I don't know, Jason, you probably don't have any additional questions that came up in the last week or so? Okay, so I don't have any, so we can start with Kathy and, um, talk to Kelly, see if you have any questions, any comments about, uh, her resume or background, or just in general, and.
Could I ask a question of the committee first?
Sure.
Um, how many times did you meet Kelly? Just the one time?
Just the once.
Okay.
Um, so, um, of the candidates, uh, we met with Kelly once, and she also came highly recommended by Denise.
Okay, and how many candidates did we have total?
We had two that we interviewed.
Okay, and are we still accepting?
I believe so. We haven't closed it, as far as I know.
Okay, okay, so I'm just checking on that. Okay, hey, so, uh, I, I went through your resume. Obviously, you're more than qualified for a financial director job, because you were the town administrator in Topsfield, um, for about six years. And then, from what I understand, you left a mutual agreement because you could not agree on the next contract for them. Okay, so you served two, three-year contracts with them, which is a lot of time in one place. So, um, we're hiring an interim, um, things are in a state of flux, obviously, COVID being that. Do you feel that you could, uh, commit at least a six-month branch of time to us and, and not take off the 30-day's notice two months? And I know it's a lot to ask, but honestly, do you think you can do that?
Absolutely. First, let me just thank you for having me here today. I really appreciate the opportunity, um, and the chance to get to see you face-to-face, as opposed to you through a Zoom camera or a cable. Um, but, um, to answer your question, of course, I wouldn't have even considered, um, putting my name in the hat if I wasn't willing to make the commitment. Um, I think the ad specifically stated 12 to 18 months, so.
Yes.
You know, 12 months, I think, and I, and I, I have a lot of, um, good relationships with other folks in the business and with the MMA. I sort of have seen sort of the trajectory of where a lot of my colleagues are in their career path, and know specifically of some, you know, definite vacancies that will come up, possibly a year from now. So the timing actually is very convenient for me, um, and perhaps, um, might be convenient for Groveland as well if our goals are mutual.
That's well put. I like the way you put that. That's, that's excellent. It's a very good answer to that question. Um, I want to ask, um, maybe a little trickier question, and you can take your time. So, what we've been doing in Groveland over the years is, um, dumping everything on our finance director, uh, beyond probably what the job description, I know beyond what the job description was. Um, for the interim, I would hope we won't do that, because we have a task group that's working on, looking at what would happen if we went to an administrator or manager type position. Do you think that you can handle saying no to duties that might overextend you, um, for the position that we're trying to just fill right now? In other words, we don't, I don't wanna see us hire someone and have them in there beyond 40 hours a week, trying to keep up with stuff that perhaps we should take back to this board and get done.
Um, I mean, that's, that's definitely a challenge for anyone in any town administrator position or finance director position. Um, being able to, and not just, just be able to say no, I think what I've been able to do throughout my career is to not just say, no, we can't do this, however, rather to bring other options and potential solutions to the table. So, there, you know, especially with this position where you have a lot of, uh, one of the concerns or challenges that I brought up to Denise and others was, you know, the fact that you have all of the finances of one town under a treasurer, you know, a treasurer collector, a finance director, that's a lot of responsibility, and you need, um, and it's intentional that you have a lot of checks and balances. So, um, that's an area where I might identify that there might be a resource constraint, and bring some recommendations to the table in terms of what I think might be options for the board to consider, whether it's maybe a retiree who's willing to pick up a few hours a week, or perhaps it's, you know, a part-time consultant, or an arrangement or partnership with a call-in center. So, not just being able to say no, but to explain what the alternatives are, what the challenges are, first of all, so that there's not an appearance that, um, you know, someone is just saying, no, we can't do this. Come to the table, bring some options, and with 30 years in the profession, I know lots of great folks who are willing and able, um, to share their expertise and their, um, experience, uh, from the field. So, um, that's what I would bring, is not just the ability to say no, um, but to say, here are some other options. Have you considered these other routes or these other possibilities?
Thank you. That's an excellent answer. I'm done.
Nope.
First of all, thank you for coming, and thank you for, uh, applying for this, um, position. It's really important. I did get the chance to speak to all members on the individually, uh, to get your opinion. High respect for opinion, and I believe, uh, through those conversations, that you're extremely highly vetted in the process. Um, and I trust those, uh, committee members that did their job well. What I wanna ask you is about personal relationships. How past dealings with department heads, um, because in this, this role, they'll all come to you. That's fire, police, highway, water. How in your career have you built those kind of interpersonal relationships so that you're pulling the rope in the same direction?
It's a great, that's a really great question. Um, and I think I have a really good answer, because in a lot of the positions I've had, um, and even as town administrator, you know, the role of town administrator or finance director, CAO, whatever title you wanna give it, is really about interper- building relationships, um, being able to communicate effectively, to be able to work with many different people across, you know, various departments, various committees. Some are elected, some are appointed, um, and a lot of your department heads may or may not be appointed or directly responsible, um, to you or to the board. So, um, my approach really is really a leadership and/or management approach, depending on which way you wanna talk about it. But with respect to building relationships and communications, I mean, to be successful in any position, especially one in this level, um, really, um, really requires someone who can sit and meet with someone and talk to them about their experience, about their education, their, their, what they bring to the table. And from what I understand, you have some very well-qualified, um, employees and staff and department heads here in Groveland. Um, Denise has spoken very highly about them and their competencies, uh, which is one of the reasons I was attracted to the position. Um, I, I tend to, um, have, uh, frequent interaction, communication, uh, department head meetings, whether you are appointed by the board of selectmen or three separate boards. Um, having regular communication, both in person, but al- also, um, with regard to communications and memos and helping people to understand rules, clarifying expectations along the way, and also communicating what the goals of this board are, um, to them, because my role, the role of the CAO or finance director in this case, would be to communicate your goals and objectives to them and to implement them. And to do that successfully, you need to have good interpersonal relations, you need to have good communication. Um, but you also need to be able to sit with someone and it, and have them explain what their resource constraints are and what the obstacles or the challenges may be for them to be able to accomplish the goals in the big-picture items that are brought before them by the board and by the administrator. So I think it's really important that you communicate and you have that interpersonal relationship with folks. It also makes it much easier to say no to people who you feel, uh, respect you because of the fact that you've given them the opportunity to meet with you and to have you understand what they see from their, you know, from their experience, so that you have the opportunity to understand that and to make recommendations or reg-, um, or provide them with, um, some avenues for solutions, or even just to be in ear for them. Uh, so communication is very key in, in developing those relationships and being successful.
Great. How would you describe your management style? You will, obviously, in the position, in the role you're ex- looking to accept, you will have direct reports. How would you describe yourself as a manager and, or your management style?
Um, I would describe my management style, well, it, it's sort of interconnected with my leadership style. I believe that, um, you know, if, if you're leading, if you're leading folks, you're, they're doing things voluntarily based on your management ability to communicate what the goals and objectives are, talk about the big picture. Um, in this line of work and the limited resources available, you can't be a micromanager, or you won't get anything done, or you certainly won't be able to accomplish all of the things in the basket. Uh, my management style is one of, um, regular communication, um, regular discussion, um, and not, um, putting off conversations that need to be had, so that you can clarify expectations before things become problematic. Um, you cannot be a manager in this line of work that expects that because you throw out a command that people are just automatically going to do what you say because you say it. That's just a militaristic, um, idea that really goes against my personal management style. Um, and that's just because of, you know, everything that in town government, you're just, there, there's no one person who can say, do this, um, effectively. You really need to build those interpersonal relationships and allow people to communicate with you and use your leadership to give them the reasoning, um, and the direction that you need as a manager to make sure that they're following your lead, um, and that they're doing the right thing, but also constant, you know, check-in, you know, trust but verify, um, making sure, doing your check-ins. I also am someone who likes to, you know, set goals in writing and then say, how are you doing with those goals or objectives? And when they say, oh, yeah, we're getting them done, to get people to quantify results. Well, is it 50% done? Is it 75% done? I'm not gonna micromanage, but I need to be able to communicate back to the board how we're, um, you know, how we're achieving or where, how we're moving forward with goals and objectives. So, I, I, I hope that I've answered your question about management style.
Very well. Um, you do seem to have a lot of human resource experience. How would you bring that, those years of experience to Groveland? And how do you see yourself in that role as you'd be the, obviously, you'd be the number-one human resource point person for all the town?
Yeah. Um, it, that's very similar to what I did in Topsfield. I was also the personnel director there. There was no HR department. There was no HR director or manager. Um, and a lot of the skills that I brought to Topsfield and could bring to Groveland are really those that I built upon, not only through my career, but especially when I was in Lowell and was working as the HR director there, um, and was able to work directly with labor unions and health benefits. Um, when I was in Topsfield, one of the, um, best things that I was able to do, I think, is to be able to identify where the gaps were, because you have this, you know, this, this personnel manual and these, you know, regulations, and how you connect that document to people, and not only the people who have to adhere to those, but the people who are going to vote on what the next ones need to be. Um, a lot of times, what I found was very helpful, was dealing with the, um, personnel issues that would come up and trying to guide the process in a few different ways. Number one, what does the personnel rules and regs say about that? And you use that as your basis for helping to either come up with a decision right then and there, or to, or to visualize and identify the fact that there's a gap that hasn't been addressed before. You need to document that, and you need to be able to bring that forward, so that you can effectively have some resolution at some point, whether it means adding that to the list of items that need to be brought to the board, or to a personnel board, or even to the next town meeting for, um, you know, for, um, you know, really just to, and whether or not it needs to be, um, you know, further defined with respect to the particular issue at hand. So, you know, there's, there's a lot, being personnel officer of a small town and finance director and treasurer collector, it, it's very challenging, but it's something that I feel very comfortable with, having had the six-years' experience in Topsfield and also working in Lowell.
Great. Um, one more question. In your 29 years of municipal experience, what was the biggest mistake you made, and what did you learn from it?
Well, I have, I.
Believe me, nobody's perfect.
Oh, oh, that was the first thing I was gonna say. We've all made mistakes. That's how, you know, if there was one biggest one, um, oh, gosh, you know, there's a bunch of little ones along the way that, you know, if you're smart, you would, you, you deal with it, you address it, you apologize, you make it right, and you learn from it. So, biggest mistake might be, I guess, I could say that sometimes during the course of your career, um, well, I can give you a strength and a weakness and answer tho- those questions in one, in one example. Um, I tend to think of myself as a problem solver. When I see a problem, I wanna help, I wanna, I wanna help solve that problem. I wanna address, why is it that this happened? You know, whatever that mistake was, what did it result in, and how could we do it better the next time? So as a problem solver, I really enjoy, and, and, in being in this career path, I really like being able to think through a problem and figure out the best way to solve it, or a way to at least improve it the next time. Sometimes, though, you can make the mistake of micromanaging or jumping in too soon with a solution before you've allowed the people you work with, the people who, um, you know, are paid to be department heads, to come up with those solutions. That, you know, sometimes you just have to step back and let them outline what the possible solutions are, so that you're both learning together, and you're not sort of jumping the gun. So, that's been more of a challenge. I can't point to any particular instance, but I find that, you know, as a CAO, finance director, the person in charge, if you will, um, really being able to help develop the people around you, uh, whether that's the board or department heads or staff, you know, helping them to understand, you know, don't be too quick to come up with a solution when you don't fully understand the problem and you haven't given everyone involved the opportunity to be a part of that solution and to learn from it.
I really like that answer. It, it's analogous to a doctor making sure he's not gonna kill the patient before he describes some medicine. Uh, one last question. Give me three words that best describe Kevin Ebert. I get stumped on this one all the time.
So only three? I mean, I, geez.
Best.
I'm thinking of phrases, which technically isn't just one word. I'm proactive. I am effective. And, see, this is the, this is a tough one. I have, I think I have a really good sense of humor, but I can't, so I am.
Hey, you're funny.
I, I wouldn't go that far. I wouldn't ever be a stand-up comic, but I don't know what the one word is. Um, you know, I like, that's the question that stuck to me. I've been on lots of interviews. Um, I guess, I don't know, can anyone? So this, I'll throw that back to you. What's a good word for, I have a good sense of humor?
Uh.
In this line of business, you have to have a good sense of humor, because.
In life in general, you have to have a good sense of humor. You have to be able to laugh at yourself every now and then, have a sense of humility. Um, and, uh, it, it helps. Um, I'm good.
In teaching, we call that you can make connections with people. You can laugh at yourself and connecting with people, which is a big deal.
Agreed. How do you get that to one word? Sometimes I.
It's how you connect all the people. It's, it's something you can just.
Connecting.
Communicator.
Communicator.
Like Ronger Regan, the great communicator.
Communicator. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you for your.
Did you feel that?
I did, and I.
The paradigm there with.
I appreciate your answers to your questions. Some of them are, are not always easy. They're, they're kind of subjective, not straightforward, but I appreciate your honesty, and thank you very much.
Ed?
We're gonna expect that question in the next interview.
I'm gonna wake up at three in the morning with three words, and I'll be like, how come I didn't think of that?
You can text Bill, I'll give you his number.
Expected a five-word though. Just, uh, a couple of points. Uh, it, it, it doesn't, look, look in your resume, but it doesn't look like you stay, uh, at any place very long. Three years, two years, few months. Uh, can you explain, uh, continually moving around?
Yep. I've actually been, um, in different positions in Lowell, three different titles. I've actually been in different positions in Lowell, three different titles. If I've moved around, it, it might appear as though I've moved around, but really I haven't. What, what you see probably, or what I see, is a career track record of, of being proactive and going in and being successful, and doing something well, and then being promoted very soon after within that same position. When I started, after I got my graduate degree from Northeastern, I worked in Lowell. I was there for four months before I was promoted to the Director of Neighborhood Services. And then after that appointment, I had since gone back as HR director. Of course, the first time I went to work in Lowell, I was in undergraduate. I went there as an intern, and I worked in the manager's office. So, those three times I worked there in a progressively responsible position. When I worked in Belmont, I was only there a few months before I realized that the manager that I went to work for was not going to be getting a new contract. So, within four months of me being there, I was promoted to interim town administrator in the town of Belmont. So, it may look like I wasn't there very long, but the reality is that I was hired to be an assistant town administrator, and then served nine months as the interim town administrator. And then because of that experience, I had realized that my career path had led me to another place where I felt I was ready to take on a town administrator role, which is why I then went to the town of Topsfield, and had served there for six years, and had two full contracts there during my tenure.
It seems like when you left Chelmsford, you were assistant town manager in Chelmsford, you were there for three years. Looked like a, a step backwards to human relations manager out in, out in Lowell.
I, I could see why someone would think that. I wasn't ready to be a town manager at the time. My time, my three years or so in Lowell was a great opportunity to work for a different type of government. It was Model E. I was recruited by the town, by the city manager, who was previously the town manager in Chelmsford, to take over a very challenging role in Lowell. And at the time, we were negotiating health insurance benefit upgrades and changes. We're also negotiating with labor unions on new contracts. During the time I was in Lowell, I spent a great number of, a, a lot of time helping to save the city millions of dollars by negotiating good contracts and negotiating healthcare plan design, and getting to, get more skills on my resume with respect to personnel and human relations and benefits administration. So, I, I felt very great, very good about my, my time there before I eventually moved on.
Looking over your extensive resume here, in, in different positions, do you have any experience in grant writing? I don't see in any of these towns or cities that you worked, that you had listed anything as far as writing grants.
Yes. Well, I did put a section at the end, which talks about a lot of the grants, the, probably the, the second or third page perhaps. And I only, if I wrote a line for every grant I've gotten in my 30-year career, I probably wouldn't have space for any other titles. Especially in Topsfield, we were able to get numerous grants through the Community Compact Program, through the IT Infrastructure Program. We got $90,000. We've gone, before I, before I left there, we were actually able to get some earmarks from the state budget to give $50,000 to, you know, to do upgrades at the pond. We did a downtown revitalization grant, where we were able to get at least $15,000 for a downtown parking plan. So, on numerous occasions, I've been able to write grants. I have a very good experience with doing that. I also was able to write a grant where the town of Topsfield got to hire a part-time facilities director to oversee the new, or, or the construction of a plan to get the new town hall cleaned and taken care of on a regular basis. So, I have many, lots of experience with grant writing.
Topsfield about the same size as Groveland, give or take, a couple hundred people. Can you explain, this, this really stood out, the, the construction of the town's first water treatment plant. Can you explain that? You know, I think, I think Groveland could use something like, we don't have a water treatment plant where we feed our drinking water. And we, we have had people come in here to meetings about the, the dirty or rusty water. A lot of people have filters. Can you explain the construction of that? You, you had something to do with it? And were you able to secure any kind of grants for that?
I did have a lot to do with the administration of it, once it got through town meeting. I think that I did have a lot to do in terms of being behind the scenes. We had a, an independently elected Board of Water Commissioners, and the water superintendent was actually in charge of the process. When I got to Topsfield, they had gone to town meeting at least once or twice before, and had not been successful at getting town meeting appropriation, or the vote, from the open town meeting. Soon after being there and seeing that process, we realized that we needed to take another tact, that there needed to be more information sharing. There aren't a lot of grants out there to build water treatment plants, or a lot of infrastructure. So, that might be a bad example of a project that the town did have to pay for out of its, you know, out of the enterprise funds. However, there are some things, many things, that are mandated by the EPA and DEP. And so, the manganese levels in the water in Topsfield really necessitated that the water treatment plant be built. And so, I like to think that through my indirect sort of shepherding of the process, that we were able to successfully get there through town meeting. But also during the construction, I had to oversee as chief procurement officer, all of the paperwork. I was involved with a lot of the meetings with the, you know, with the architects, and with all of the folks involved with that, with the superintendent, with the Board of Commissioners. So, it takes a lot of coordination. I played the part of making sure that anything that needed to be voted properly, or needed to go through the, you know, accounting, or through the warrant process, that that was done correctly. And while we were doing that, we were also dealing with the renovation of the town hall, and also the MSBA and two school improvement projects. So, during that, that span of time, we were able to accomplish a lot of big-ticket projects, and stay on top of the budget process, and to make sure that those results were delivered under budget, and they were.
In, in the past few years, and you'll lose track of time after a while, Topsfield did a big, like a big renovation project downtown. They put in new sidewalks and, and planting. I don't know whether that predated you or not.
I wrote that grant.
You did. And, and the rail trail predated you. But-
But we helped do a number of grants because we were doing it in little sections. So, we worked with the rail trail committee to make sure that all of the right, you know, the i's were being dotted and the t's were being crossed for those process.
I, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Any else have any other questions? I don't have any more. I was in the committee. Jason, anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Kelly, you have any questions for us?
Not at this point. I just wanted a chance to come and meet you all, and I've been doing some research, so I'll continue to do that until I hear otherwise. But just wanted to thank you for the opportunity and-
For coming back and seeing us.
Yeah.
Some of us for a second time.
Mr. Chu. One question. Looking at your resume again, I noticed that most of the towns you've worked for, or cities like Lowell, are maybe not bigger geographically wise, or population wise, but all of them have a much larger industrial and commercial base than Groveland does. How do you think that would impact your ability as finance director, knowing that your resources here are limited?
Well, actually, Topsfield is very similar. It was probably 95% residential for revenues coming into the town. There's not a very, I mean, most people think the Top, I mean, Topsfield Fair is one of the largest employers in the town, but there really isn't a lot of industrial at all. And there, and there's always that, you know, that, that give and take that happens. But I think that when you're working with smaller communities, there's a lot more opportunities for interchange, but also there's a lot more necessity of making sure that when you're trying to get something through town meeting, that you've communicated and that you've talked with people. And if people don't want to change something in their town, if they feel that it's out of character of the town, no one's going to make them to do that. So, and that's sort of the beauty of open town meeting, is that everybody has a chance to go to the meeting and say their piece. You know, it's a challenge, because there's only so many, so many people, there's a limited amount of resources that can come from your tax base. So, you have to be creative, you have to think outside the box. You know, as an interim, though, I think that my role wouldn't necessarily, I could see that more of a role for a permanent finance director, or a permanent town administrator. My role in this as an interim wouldn't necessarily be to make those recommendations directly, but then to say, you know, here are some, here are some resources that we can be looking at for the next year, or year and a half, so that if you're interested in developing a certain industry, or a certain type of commercial, I can lead you to those resources and help pave the way to make that possible. As an interim, though, I can only bring resources to the table. We can't, you know, the focus will be on transition, getting the town to where it needs to be at the next step of whatever, you know, town meeting decides.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Okay?
I have a question.
Yeah?
For you. So, this was under discussion and possible vote, and I guess I'm asking my fellow members, would we entertain a motion to offer Kelly the interim position, subject to successful contract negotiations?
If you so wish to make that motion, it is under discussion and possible vote, so you could do that.
Make the motion and see if it gets seconded. So, I'm gonna make a motion to offer you, offer Kelly Herbert the position of interim financial director, subject to successful contract.
Yes.
Okay. That's my motion then.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? I will add that, thank you again for coming in.
I'm happy to leave so you can have an open discussion if you like.
If you're not embarrassed to be here while we're-
Watch it on TV later anyways.
Not at all.
If you're not embarrassed, I don't think you are, to be here while we're talking about you in front of you, then, you know, we're all good.
Like you said, I can go home and watch it on TV, or I can stay here now.
Exactly. Either way, you're gonna hear what we have to say. I would agree with Kelly's, not Kelly, Kathy's motion that we move forward and take a vote. I think, should that happen, we would, or I would also request that we bring Denise into those contract negotiations, because she's much better at that than any of us would be. But that would be my preference. So, we have a motion, we have a second, we have no further discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll have to set up-
Or condolences, we-
You have two cards.
We're, we're a fun group of people.
We have a sense of humor too.
Can I also thank our, our committee? I believe it was you, Mike Wood and you, Jason.
Somehow I got voted chair to do that.
Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Jocelyn.
Thank you. So, Jim Scanlon, Sam Jocelyn, and we had a town president?
Janet.
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 Yep.
So, Janet, wherever you are, thank you very much.
So, what we'll do is, I'll communicate with you, or Catherine will communicate with you, whenever we can set up a time to talk and work through the next step, and hopefully we'll come up with something everyone agrees on, and we can move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. I appreciate your time.
It's great to meet all of you. Thank you.
All right. So, that was fun. Let's move on to finance director duties in the interim. So, after talking about this last week with Denise, and where Catherine go? She took off.
That's Kelly.
Oh, that's Catherine.
Oh, that's, oh yeah, that's, I'm so confused.
In talking with Catherine, I think the best way to move forward with what we have currently is to not overwhelm Catherine with emails and redundant conversations, and to bring everything through me as far as agenda items and requests, and then I can filter that into one communications to Catherine, instead of her fielding multiple emails. I'll take that on. Also, in the interim, if you don't have a direct department head, you should notify me through Catherine about any time off requests, so we can manage that together, unless somebody else wants to take that on. If anyone, employees or department head is going, is not going to be in the office, or at least in town during business hours, you should note, also notify me through Catherine, so we can track time off, and vacation time and sick time. Legal matters will be communicated by me to KP Law, so all requests or correspondence or any I talk about will be communicated through me, and I will talk to KP Law as a point of contact. Also, we have COVID-19 money for tablets that the BOs can use. If you don't want to use massive packets of paper anymore, like I haven't used in five years, we do have surface tablets that you could be set up with.
I very much appreciate that, sir.
Yep, all right. So, I think Catherine probably has those, but Denise said that she would set those up for us. So, anybody have anything else on their finance director duties in the interim?
So, other than that, I guess what I would say is that any capital purchases that were voted by town meeting are still going to be handled by Denise?
On the Fridays, yes.
Okay. And so, any purchases that weren't specifically authorized by town meeting, and I can think of like cable purchases or anything like that, should come through us until we get somebody on board.
Yes. Yes.
And that goes for the CARES Act?
Yes. I would agree with that.
Any changes to field, whatever they do when they reserve them, has to, I'm okay with giving you the authority on that if you want to.
I don't want the authority, but I'll assume it. But like field use would, would still go through you with Catherine. If there's any issue that you can't handle, you should always contact me on it, I guess, but-
Correct. I mean, I don't want people waiting two weeks all the time.
I've already put my request in.
All right, we'll see.
So-
I'm already out of the loop.
What?
You already put your request in for field something or other. All right. All set?
So, yes, okay.
As far as procurement and, and to Kathy Cashon Ellis's point, are we going to put a threshold on those expenditures, or does it start from dollar one?
I guess what I-
Typically, over $10,000, you have to go out to bid.
Yes.
And Denise would take that. If it was under $10,000, she would just kind of figure it out, make it happen.
Yes.
Do we want to put a threshold on, on expenditures, I think, before the board of a certain amount, or are we gonna start at dollar one?
What I said was, all, when we voted the budget at town meeting, department heads put into their budget the backup for what they got, what they need to purchase and spend. That's been approved. I'm talking about any spending that's outside that. So, that would be, off the top of my head, just the CARES Act spending and the cable, the cable spending that we sometimes have for equipment.
Would there be anything else?
I don't know, but I'm saying-
I don't know, but-
Anything that's outside that town meeting bubble-
Would have to come to us.
Right. And I, I'm okay with voting Chairman Wood to have the authority, if he can't wait, to take, to make a decision on it.
And I don't know that there would be anything that dire with that.
I don't either, but I'm okay with that, if that's what needs to happen.
Cable. It's a cable. Cost is $4.99. Are we going to just allow them to get that?
I think it would go to Catherine and the CCB on it.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm worried about, getting bogged down in the minutia-
Correct.
-of pennies and, and, as opposed to big items-
Right.
-that we should really kind of watch. The CARES Act would be one of those things, unless it's a $50 expenditure to buy another, you know, stack of 100 masks, then I don't know if it rises to that level where-
Well, hopefully, it'll only be in the short term, and there won't be a whole lot to, to deal with.
Right.
And what did you say about hope?
It's not a strategy. It's not a strategy.
I, I trust this, this board, and I trust Chairman Wood to have the correct discretion, to know when we need to talk about it.
Won't be buying another car.
Let's put that in the minutes, please.
Jason, you have any other comments?
No.
Ed, you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So, we can move on, or do we, do, do we want to make a motion for me to have that kind of control for the short term, or, I don't really-
I would make a motion that Chairman Wood can use his discretion on, on CARES Act, or cable, or other miscellaneous spending that there might be a question on. that there might be a question on. That he will use his discretion as to whether or not to let it go through and tell us about it the next meeting or bring it to us. I trust the discretion. That's a motion.
Second in order to have discussion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Second. Discussion?
Well, can I put a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Of all purchases above $100 is, I mean, I don't want to just get bogged down in just, like I said, the minutia. And I don't think he needs to get bogged down in that kind of small ticket item. This way we have, at least we have a seller.
That's fine by me. Anybody else, Jason? Ed? All those in favor? Fantastic. Moving on, vote to the Board, adopt a grievance procedure under the American, American with Disabilities Act. Do we have a chance to review that?
Yeah, I did. And if I may, Mr. Chee. Sam has really put together a nice procedure to address grievances by residents or non-residents that frequent the town buildings or facilities with disabilities. I think it's very straightforward. It's one page. It's simple. And this will allow us to get to where we need to be as far as them requesting grants so that we can bring buildings and facilities that aren't up to code, up to code so that everyone can enjoy them equally, not just the able-bodied people, but also the disabled people. I've read it. I think it's very concise, to the point, and I think it makes sense.
Anybody else have a comment on it?
I think Sam did a good job preparing it and a good explanation of why it's needed.
So can I make a motion to adopt the grievance procedure under the American with Disabilities Act as presented by Mr. Sam Jocelyn?
I'll second that.
The motion and the second. Jason, any further discussion? Kathy, any?
Just then, whether or not our town attorney should look at this before we accept it. I want to make sure that we're not overlooking anything because we definitely do have areas in the town where, which we need to address. And I want to make sure that...
Maybe we should ask Sam if that requires attorney review.
Thank you. That would do it for me. So subject to that question.
Anything else?
No, I made the motion.
Ed, anything else? I think I asked you. All those in favor?
In favor, subject to that.
We'll run that by Sam. Catherine, can you run that document by Sam just to make sure that he agrees that it's okay? Or he believes it will be okay by the attorney? Well, I want to get his take on it. Does he think we need to have the attorney review it? I don't know that we need that, but I would like to have his input on that.
Is this a copy from another town that may have already been vetted through the label system?
That's one of the reasons I want him to...
Right. And each town's different though, so I just want to make sure.
All right, so moving on, we have selectmen times and reports. I am going to go first so I don't forget. I want to congratulate Shane Potter and his Eagle Skull Project. He repaired the bleachers at Washington Park. There were pictures somewhere. I don't know if they were in the packet, but they came out great. Also, I wanted to thank the fire department for responding to a dangerous fire on Saturday night. It was a four alarm fire. I ended up talking to the chief Saturday, Sunday morning. A couple firefighters got hurt. I believe they're okay. But that was a big dangerous fire. I want to thank the fire department for everything that they did that night. That was... Ed, anything you have for that?
No, I'll just echo those statements.
Great.
Same here, as well as thanking the fire departments from West Newbury, Amesbury, Topsfield. I can't remember all the communities that either, that came to the scene or manned the stations while they were empty. That was, that's also a big, much gratitude there for their help.
Kathy, anything?
No.
Jason? Okay, old or unfinished business. Back to you, Jason.
I'd like to make sure we get on the agenda for the social media policy. Last time.
Yes. If you can make a note, Catherine, to make that an agenda item for the next meeting? Is it? Okay.
I think we did put it out a couple of, because this meeting was kind of packed already.
Yeah, you're right. I think we skipped this one for the next one.
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I have two items. One is the request for a plaque at Washington Park in memory of Christine Parento. And my question is, can we put that request on the agenda to like, at least move it forward? I'm thinking that we'd want to involve the baseball league and the Snack Shack to whether or not this is something that they would like. And my second item is the Perry Park parking.
Yes, I actually did. I did talk to Denise about that. That slipped through her last few days.
I know. Here's my, I have a thought on it though, for maybe future agenda, that what they did up around the Johnson's Pond with the rocks, they kind of defined the parking area by putting big rocks where you couldn't park and then kind of outlined the parking area that way. I think that maybe would help because if you look at it, like obviously cars are being parked on the grass. They're ruining that. And it's looking worse than it used to look. I mean, I think overall at some point we have to think about all this parking on town parks, but we do seem to allow it overnight.
Yeah.
And as long as we're allowing it in other areas, like I would not want it to take it away. I just think we need to outline it with those rocks.
As far as the Washington Street plaque, I think Bill, Washington Park, Washington Park. I think, I talked to Bill about it the other day and you had a suggestion about next...
Yeah, I can elaborate on that for you. I have been in contact with the GBL Board. However, because of the pandemic, they are not meeting as normally as usual. I have been in contact with the friends. They're not family members. And I, I think it's important that we take the next step to, and I'm trying to corroborate the, what was in the email. I'm trying to reach back to people that have a deep history with GBL to understand exactly what this woman did as to not offend. Typically, nothing is done in a vacuum. Nothing is done by themselves. So I just want to make sure that in recognizing this one person, we don't unintentionally omit someone else that might have been just as vital to that project as this person was. As far as doing something now, I spoke with the folks that sent the email and they are in agreement. To do it now while the season is winding down would not really be appropriate. It's not going to help us or anyone memorialize this person because there'll be nobody there. My suggestion was to wait till spring for opening day when it would be a much more appropriate, should we decide, and they agreed that that's the appropriate action to be taken, to where the park is filled and it'll be the greatest recognition for this person in the spring during opening day. And they agreed. They thought that was a fantastic idea. They had never thought that, yeah, it's winding down and there'll be nobody there. Put up a plaque, but only the birds will be witness. So they're in agreement that, you know, it would be much better to do something in the spring or an opening day, and we're working with that. I have, I have requested an audience with the GBL as soon as they get back to some sense of normalcy. Right now, again, their last game was Saturday. So their, their basically business is done until probably January, February, when they begin to ramp up for their league next year again.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So to your point, that's, that's great that you've done all that legwork. If you'd like, I could reach out to the Parento family.
It's not the Parento family. That's the problem.
I know that, but the death was in the Parento family. So I would like to speak to them about it. I've been in the town a long time, so I can also reach out to people who I know were down at the ball field during those years because my children would have been too. And I especially like the idea of the opening day. They actually did that for my daughter Jackie when she passed. And it was very moving for our whole family that they remembered that she had played the T-ball and they did that for her among the silence. And so it's something that can be done. I think, I just feel like we need to include the Parento family. So if you haven't contacted them, I'd be glad to do that.
I think what we'll do is let you two kind of work on that.
Okay. That'd be great.
Well, if you want to take the whole thing, then that's fine. I, I don't think it's a good idea to have too many hands in the stoop. So if you want to talk to the Parento crew, the GBL...
It's up to you though. I'm glad to do whatever tasks you didn't do. I mean, I would never trip over or go back over what you've already done because you've, you've obviously done some stuff, which is...
Well, I, I have personal relationships with all these people, so it's, it's easy for me to contact them over the phone and the text. It's just difficult to get an audience with them right now with the COVID. They're doing all their meetings at Zoom. They haven't had a real live get-together in months. So that's part of the problem. And I do know some people that go back so to try and corroborate the story and get the best idea. Maybe she's just one of many. Maybe at the end of the day, the GBL and we will agree to memorialize a number of people that were instrumental in revitalizing Washington Park and making it what it is today. That's something that I'm keenly aware of and I don't want to leave someone out that might have been just as vital. So I'm trying to get a lot of the story, who she was, who else was involved, names, places, dates, so that we can put together a story that is really historical in sense, that people can corroborate this happened, that happened, this was, person was involved, that person was involved, that person should be recognized as well as this person. So that we don't leave anybody, we don't leave any stone unturned. And that's, that was my goal and that's why I called them personally just to explain what we're trying, what I was trying to do with the GBL in contacting some of the older folks. Some of the, some of the folks I know, their, their kids are, I think they might be older than your children even. So that's what I'm trying to go back 30, 35, 40 years to when that was...
You've got enough there.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's at least leave this with the understanding that it's being worked on.
And that's what I...
At some level, and that the plan initially is to do something in the spring. We have plenty of time to do all of the correspondence and the background information before anything is planned for the spring, so...
The family, this family to reach out to us was in agreement that that would be more appropriate. And that gives us also more time to really get the whole story straight and make sure we do it right the first time out.
All right, Kathy, so that was Washington Park and Perry Park. Was that it for...
Well, just one, the other thing is I, Jason brought it up, but it's also other areas on the, the old water and sewer building. We're not really cutting the grass, if you want to call it grass there. It looks kind of like an abandoned building now. It's starting to have that look. And we kind of did the same thing, I guess, down at Perry Park, right, to a degree. We kind of abandoned some of the upkeep. And I'm just wondering is why or...
I have no idea.
Have to wait till Wednesday.
Can we get that a future agenda to find out?
Yeah, but maybe we won't have to wait until then. I can...
Okay.
Why, that hasn't been done. So that's Perry and...
We did, we did get the Mini Cooper gone. Their Red Cat's still there.
Bill, anything on their old business?
No, sir, not at this time.
Ed, anything on their old business?
No.
All right, so moving on to correspondence. We have minutes from May 26, 2020. Executive session minutes from August 3, 2020. Executive session minutes from August 7, 2020. Savings from LED streetlights, which was a wonderful amount of savings. And then follow-up on 81A Seven Star Road, which I was just reading again. So now we have adjournment at 5:54.
Pushing to adjourn at 5:54.
You beat it to it. All those in favor? Thank you.